Go ahead and call this meeting to order at seven forty-one. Go ahead.
United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and do roll call.
Okay, noting that the mayor is not here this evening, we'll start with Council Smallwood, who I don't yet see. I can send her a message, make sure she.
Yeah, make sure she's got on there.
Okay, and then Council Sheldon, here. That's a Walker.
Here.
That's our expert.
Present.
As for Hopkinson.
Yep.
And Council President Peetzel.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move to the public comment. Note that council will take comments on ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh nine during public hearing later in the agenda. The council welcomes your comments on other matters at this time. If you're attending the meeting in person, please submit your comment signup form to the city recorder before regular meeting begins. Were there any comments that came in?
No, there were not.
All right, we'll move on. If you're attending the meeting via Zoom, please come be online, which we didn't have any.
Wish we did not.
Jump ahead here. And then the Council President, we'll call each person, which we didn't have any, so we'll move on.
And I see the Council Smallwood has.
Welcome, Lori. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent or changes to the consent.
Make a motion to approve the second.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kathleen, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Those passes. Sorry if I don't use your last names up here. I hope you don't mind. Sometimes I can't even remember your guys' own names and say that guy over there or that gal.
It's all good.
We'll start with new business. Go ahead, contract award Bell Street three sixty-second Avenue construction.
Thank you. So the decision to be made tonight is whether to accept the corrected low bid of nine million three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents from Connell Construction and Demolition Court and award the contract for the street project, the extension of three sixty-second Avenue and Bell Street. The extension of three sixty-second Avenue and Bell has been designated as a city council goal for a number of years and anticipated benefits to the community include relief of of a chronic traffic bottleneck at Highway twenty-six and expanded economic development as well as improved access to the high school and middle school. The project will construct fifteen hundred feet north of three sixty-seven Avenue, north of twenty-six and construct a new three thousand two hundred feet segment from Bell Avenue. Key considerations, on Tuesday, April nineteenth, the city opened four bids ranging from nine point three million to eleven point five million. The lowest responsible, the lowest responsive bidder was Connell. Canal, thank you. A tabulation of the bids discovered a small math error of two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents, making the corrected low bid nine million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. The bids have been examined. There are no concerns to note as a local-based company. Tell me again, Connell?
Canow.
Canow. Has lower mobilization costs. So our recommendation is to award a contract to Canal for the extension of three sixty-second and Bell Avenue. And in terms of budgetary impact, it will be funded from the street fund. Budget updates and funding strategies were presented at the sixty and ninety percent engineers estimates.
Thank you. Discussion.
First off, it's great to see a local contractor get the bid. I know that this council in the past has said we would love to see more of that kind of stuff happening and many times the local folks just don't seem to be able to compete with some of the larger. So it's great to see a local construction outfit get that bid. It's great to see that. The only other thing I would say is, is I know some of this money is based on some income as we go through time. We don't feel insecure that this money is going to be available.
No, um. The project came in below the engineer's estimate as well as the schedule has been extended into next summer, which helps push us into another biennium cycle. I did mention that some of the excellent city staff, Jordan, Jeff and Tyler, also applied for a raise grant, which we may or may not receive in July, and that would just help free up more street utility funds.
Little concerns about funding throughout this process. Okay.
It's probably not even related to the contract itself, but as this is kind of the focal point, as somebody is coming east into town, and they have street lighting as part of this, just want to make sure it's an inviting, warm, nice street lighting and not the cheapest blue fluorescent in the nineteen sixties or lighting. Is that, is that appropriate at this point in time?
I do not know the details of the street lighting. I know we, Mike, particularly my predecessor worked with ODOT, so we can look into those details.
Just warm the lights up a little, okay?
All right, Lori, I cannot see you, so if anyone that is, oh.
I'm stuffing my face, so.
That's why.
I'm here listening.
All right. Unmute your camera or mention something. There isn't any further discussion now. Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Jenny, one of the things we had talked about earlier meetings was the opportunity in the future to do some sort of a cost reimbursement agreement to help recoup rate some of the costs of all this. And I know that's not part of this decision tonight, but I don't want it to fall off the table as an option that we need to be pursuing. I know it can happen at any time, which is good. It doesn't have to happen as, you know, like before the construction starts or anything like that. And so I think that's having some sort of reimbursement agreement would help us fatten up our gas tax and, and whatever the other pot of money is, so that that's money that we could be using on our local streets for a lot of different issues that are really needed sidewalks and things that we have discretionary authority over. So I'd like to, I just don't want to see that fall off. But otherwise, I, you know, good job.
All right, did you have a comment? All right. Don, or me, Carl?
I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement where Canal Construction and Demolition Corporation in the amount of nine million, three hundred and forty-six thousand and eighty-seven cents to perform construction services for the Bell three sixty-second.
All right, it's been motioned by Carl and seconded by Don. All those in favor signify by saying aye or giving me a thumbs up. Aye. Aye. Those. Which in carries. Right, the next.
No, no, you were too late.
No. I, I just want to say congratulations. This has been quite the journey and council goal to get to this point with, you know, lots of twists and turns, but also the staff work from Mike to Jenny to everyone else on the team that has been involved with acquisitions and design and planning and you know, to have the bids come in around our final estimate too, this kind of cost environment was, I think we breathed this huge sigh of relief that day with bids open that we've had such, we had so much news lately in the opposite direction that it was, we were pretty happy that day to see that we kept it right, right where we're hoping. But I did want to say, next step actually will be when we get to the groundbreaking portion, we got to break out those golden shovels.
Yeah, those gold shovels for council. All right, yeah, no, I, the only thing about the mayor being gone is I had to sit in this seat and wasn't sitting over there to where I could cry for baking luncheon, so it's been one of those, you know, one of those top things and I'll say, Lori, my long career up here, be pretty proud of.
Twice tonight, Jeremy, twice.
Being pretty proud of being able to do something that will impact the city in a positive way, what I believe will be a positive way. And it went to Canal, which is a, what, a couple of blocks away, which maybe that's why we got a lower bid, but it's awesome to see that as well and that they came in with the lowest bidder.
Short commute.
Yeah. All right, let's move on. Project management contract. For Jenny.
Right, so the next decision to be made is whether to approve an amendment for the Bell on three sixty-seven, three sixty-second extension project agreement for Harper Hoff Peterson Regalis, who is the design engineer and construction manager for the same street project that was just awarded. Some background context. HHPR was awarded, has submitted an amendment to for additional funding to their contract with the city. And so some more background, the city originally signed the contract for design March twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty, which was the start of the pandemic. And there were many difficulties as a result of this, including many government and permitting agencies have limited availability. When I first was told of the notice of this amendment, the first thing I did is review the history of the invoices to see if the invoices matched the progress that the consultant made during that time. And what I found is that they actually did. Everything was in alignment. There was nothing suspicious that there was more billings from people staying at home. Several changes were made during the design, including a realignment of the road, which necessitated rework by the consultant. And there's been many additional support services requested in terms of property acquisition, permitting and other services as requested by the city to keep the project on track. In addition, HHPR has not asked for any rate increases to this scope in the last three years despite the high inflation experienced. And so there were additional changes to the scope asked for by the city due to some of the scheduling difficulties. And amendment two is required to provide services during construction for both management and inspection, augmenting the Public Works Department limited availability. And so the original contract with HHPR was little over one point two million. With the amendment two, the amendment is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents. The adjusted total after the proposed amendment would be one point five, five, seven million and change. And additional considerations. We have worked with HHPR to reduce this amendment by removing surveying as the scope of work and assigning that task to the contractor as well as a reduction in geotech construction management. There were also HHPR donated well over forty hours kind of cleaning up the project and depending the history, they did have a key staff member depart last fall. I would also like to say that HHPR has been extraordinarily professional. They kept working with the city during the key changeover from February, March and April while helping us coach through some, so many permits were needed for this project as well as coaching us into closing several of the property that were needed moving forward. And looking at the big picture, with this proposed amendment to HHPR is approximately seventeen percent of the estimated construction costs. And this includes the right-of-way acquisition, permitting, surveying, design, as well as construction management and inspection. And comparable road projects would have an engineer as a percentage be anywhere from twenty-two to thirty percent of the construction costs. So they're well, well within what is reasonable for a project of this this size. And so the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Harper Hoff Peterson Regalis for amendment two. And the budgetary impact, the proposed amendment again is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents, which will be paid from a combination of street utility funds from the current biennium budget and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, as the project will bridge to biennium, bienniums. And as I've mentioned previously, city staff also applied for raise grant application, which we should know about in the summer, I believe in July, which also could be used to offset this.
Discussion. Motion.
I guess I'm the speaker today, so blame me for longer meetings. Did we anticipate HHPR to have additional increases requests, you think? Or do you think this is it for any more contract increases? Or what, how, how's that look in terms of finishing the project?
I think it looks pretty good. They've been a great partner. Some of these are, we're going to do an environmental site assessment, and so they're taking that on because I didn't have the time. One of the reasons this, I, I looked at it, our schedule has extended slightly into another summer, and so I, I made sure that there was enough time for that, and there's also a small amount of contingency. I, I do feel pretty comfortable with this number.
Don't expect any more requests for additional money.
I mean, they're, they're through the design and we're about to start kicking off construction, so I, I think, just my observation was the right-of-way acquisition and the permitting, like a lot of the, the permits we need to get have had retirements and new staff changeover. It's, it's just a lot of time and we're mostly through that, I think.
On our side, that.
No, for the, no, for the consultant's side as well.
Sounds like my office at work.
It's, it's, it's just a lot of, a lot of time, the JPA, the wetlands, as, as well as just the move and the there's, there's just a lot of time. And we're, we're through most of that. We've recorded most of the acquisitions today, actually.
All right, more discussion, motion.
I moved authorized city manager accept the amendment number two proposal from Harper Hoff. Hoff. Hoff Peterson, oh my gosh.
Regalis.
HHPR and entered into an agreement for the added scope in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety, nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
All right, the motion by Rich and seconded by Don that we approved this amendment number two. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, thumbs up. Aye. Those. All right, passes. All right, contract award twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Jenny, you're up again. Jenny. Spending all the money.
Money.
Sorry, I'll try to be fast. The decision to be made is whether to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Oxbow Construction for CMGC Services for the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation for inflow and infiltration reduction project. And this is for basins six and seven. We previously entered into the agreement with them to rehabilitate basins. The city solicited proposals for CMGC Services on April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. The project will rehabilitate approximately thirty-six thousand lineal feet of sanitary sewer mainlines, six hundred and thirteen sewer laterals and a hundred and forty manholes. All the work will take place in basin six and seven, which are next to most leaky basins.
Can you explain where six and seven are? I don't see the map. There wasn't a map included in the. Um.
We're in one of them right now.
What's that?
We're in one of them right now, so.
Sorry, I made my, my consultant.
This area and north and bluff road, north, everything north of twenty-six and this area.
Okay.
Southside.
Yeah. South side of the highway, north side of the highway.
Okay, but east of bluff, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um. So these two basins have the next highest infiltration and inflow rates as identified in the facility plan during the flow performed in winter twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. A public hearing on the exemption to allow the use of CMGC as an alternate procurement process was held at the city council meeting on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. The nature of the proposed work lends itself to a modified CMGC contracting method because it allows for an accelerated construction schedule. At the hearing, the city council adopted the findings to approve the use of the CMGC method for this project. Key considerations, the CMGC request for proposals closed on May sixth, twenty twenty-two, and three proposals were received. The proposals were scored on May tenth, twenty twenty-two, based on qualifications and pricing. It was clear from the proposals, Oxbow Construction understood the importance of the project objective. Their approach included multiple different rehabilitation methods and had a heavy emphasis on the pre-construction phase. Involvement, including reviewing CCTV and partnering with the city, an engineer, which is Lee Way, to determine the best value project design. The scoring team selected Oxbow Construction based on their experience and performance, project personnel and project approach. CMGC Services for the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation for influence and filtration reduction project will include services for both, both pre-construction and construction. An amendment to this contract is anticipated to be brought to the council in summer twenty twenty-two with a negotiated guaranteed maximum price to complete the construction of the project. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Oxbow Construction for CMGC Services for the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation and influence and filtration project. As for budgetary impact, the project is funded from a state grant for the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA funds, which is administered by Business Oregon. The costs for this project are included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
All right. During all these ARPA funds, are these out of that first or second tranche and like?
This is coming two points.
This is the fourteen point seven state grant.
I knew that. Just that the amount, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, am I reading the right one?
That's pre-construction services.
Just the previous.
And then the, the GMP will.
That'll be later. Okay, I'm sorry, it just seems so low.
Yeah, right. All right, if there's no other further discussion, Kathleen.
I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Oxbow Construction for construction management, management, general contracted services for the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer rehabilitation for inflow and infiltration reduction project in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, subject to the resolution of any potential protests during the seventh day protest period.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Right, I have a motion by Kathleen and a second Carl to. Yeah.
Approve it.
Approve the approve the the award contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose. Motion carries, and I wasn't aye, sorry. Moving on now to a public hearing. Building code amendments.
Thanks, Jenny.
And this is where I will go ahead and start reading this now.
Yes.
Well, Kelly slowly walks up there. Okay. I'll open this public hearing for ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine. And at eight oh five PM. And call for any of station extensions from the hearing body. Seeing none, conflicts of interest from the hearing body. Call for staff report.
Thank you. President, is that your title list tonight, president? So this is a pretty simple one before you. It's actually just some modifications to one section within one chapter of Title fifteen. It's the most, mainly to align it with the correct OAR references. Some of these have been actually outdated by over a decade, we believe. And over time, Terry gets questions once in a while, or building official gets questions once in a while from builders asking why we're referencing outdated OARS in the municipal code. So we thought it would be a good idea to bring it up to current standards and Terry or Johnny, who's also working in the building division now, they'll keep an eye on it. And as these OAR reference in the future will be quicker about changing them. So it might just look at it every year or two to make sure that they're still in line with current code. And if there are any edits, we'd bring them before you at that time instead of waiting over a decade next time. And that's, that's pretty much it. It's mainly just housekeeping.
All right, public testimony guidelines for those who wish to speak. We have one person in the audience that's not staff, and we have a few people online, so please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of the previous speaker, even if that is all used. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either email before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at ca.sandy.or.us, and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you are spinning online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call upon, on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require each person to state their name and address for the record. Call for any testimony on the proposed ordinance, it's three minutes each. Don't see anybody in the audience wants to speak, anybody online?
Just looking for any raised hands. And Council President, I don't, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, great, thanks. Call for a staff recap and recommendation.
So, yeah, yeah, thank you for holding that hearing. I suggest you just adopt using the motion language on this, in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
No, second.
Then motioned by Kathleen and seconded by Carl to close the public hearing. All those in favor by saying aye or thumbs up. Aye. Pose. Bring none, motion carries. The public hearing is now closed at eight ten. Call for any discussion by this hearing body.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I'm Kelly on fifteen oh four, one twenty, and at the very end of everything, very end, last page. I, it has the Oregon Electrical Specialty Code reference, and I'm just, I thought that the county did our electrical inspections. Is the, is it the city or the?
You're correct, it is the county. We just wanted this in here because there, there are actually opportunities, I believe, through minor label permits that they can actually ask one of our inspectors because they're such minor, easy things to inspect. And Terry actually does have some electrical certifications for residential. So in the future, if we wanted to move in that direction, it would be intercoated, okay?
Thanks.
But yes, very good point.
The further discussion. All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll ask for the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point zero four of Title fifteen of the Sandy Municipal Code in compliance with state OAR.
Have a motion.
That we approve the first reading of ordinance number two, twenty-two dash oh nine.
Second. Second, have a motion by Carl and a second by Rich to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose. Hearing none and seeing none, the first. Pose, hearing none and seeing none, the first reading is approved. That being unanimous, can I have a reading of this, the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine?
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point zero four of Title fifteen of the Sandy Municipal Code. In compliance with state OAR.
I have a motion to approve the second reading.
Before we go on, I want to make sure that we're getting Councilor Smallwoods.
I am sorry, I saw her thumbs up.
Thanks for looking out for me, Carl, I appreciate it.
Don't fall asleep. I make a motion.
Not a chance.
Have a motion, we have a second. I have a motion from Rich and a second by Don to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Pose, none, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine is approved, second reading. Right, let's move on. Discussion input on parks code. Kathleen wants to.
Go easy.
All right.
You want a staff report, okay. Sorry, I just, it's not my computer, so it always takes me. See, can I zoom in a little bit here?
Sorry, it's the PDF.
Right. There we go. That looks pretty good. Okay, so this is just a little overview, kind of a high level overview of the code changes and the master plan amendments. That will be coming before you on June sixth, and those will be done as two separate ordinances, the master plan. Will just have the typical thirty day effectiveness date, you know, thirty days after the ordinance is ready for the second reading will be effective. The parks code changes, staff is proposing to do, to do those by emergency. Just like we did the ones to chapter seventeen one hundred a couple of weeks ago, so that it sets the goalposts for new land use applications. And on the line tonight, we do have, I believe, sorry, can't see everybody.
We do.
But Marine Rad with. ESA is on the line if there's any questions for the master plan that I can't really cover and. Rochelle is also on the line to cover any, anything in particular to the master plan amendments that I don't. I don't really have a lot to cover on that, so if you have questions on that, it would be better to direct them to Rochelle Marine. So as I just said, the two objectives are to basically look at the master plan and the code amendments in anticipation of hearings on June sixth. So in three weeks. As you'll see, there a little timeline, this is for the code amendments, so I'll go through the code amendments timeline and proposal first, and then I'll turn it over to the master plan. So as I think most of you know, we've been working on these code edits off and on since, I believe, July of two thousand twenty-one. So it's been about ten months now. And during that time, we brought him to the board and commission, I believe, last fall and got recommendation and input. The board and commission both had some good takeaways, and then also I met with. Parks Bar Chair Don Robertson and also Counselor Walker, and they also had some really good points and. So it had me kind of scrambling a little bit, so we decided not to bring it forward to city council last November like it was originally scheduled for. And instead, we kind of went back to the drawing board on some of the code changes. And then we also got Spencer, who's also on the line tonight, more involved with those code edits to make sure they're clear and objective and to make sure we're. Incorporating limit land use concerns. So it has been a pretty lengthy process. And we still have an opportunity to make some slight tweaks over the next few weeks. But in saying that, I think it's also really important to go forward with adoption, as I'll cover here in a few slides. And then in April, it went before the Parks Board and Planning Commission again. They both recommend approval, the planning commission did have two really small changes that they wanted incorporated. So the main references, and again, I'm just going to keep it real high level, there's a lot of red line that you can see in the document. So in chapter seventeen thirty-two, so this is the code section that basically speaks to the use or the zoning. District, which is parks and open space POS. And we, we changed the end section because the city attorney's office. Felt more comfortable with changing it to how it's now written in the track change version, there's really no reason to have private parks. In there, we also added an applicability section, and then we added a lot of clarity to the permitted uses and accessory uses. And this was with a lot of input from. Don Robertson on the Parks Board. Counselor Walker and ESA, all of which have a lot more park experience than I do, so that was very helpful to get their input on. The uses that we should kind of allow and how to change that section. So moving right along to kind of, I think even the more important chapter, which is chapter seventeen eighty-six, this is the chapter that kind of governs. When and how we acquire parkland from developers or the fee and lieu, this is also the chapter that. Determines the calculations for how much parkland we can acquire, and this is also the chapter that kind of sets some parameters around how parkland develops. As far as where streets are located around the park, if houses front to the park, those sorts of things. So this is, this is kind of. The other chapter is more of the zoning code, this is more of the nuts and bolts of how you actually see park development done in Sandy. So a few of the big things are, we've done a lot of late work on incorporating the two thousand twenty-two. Amended Parks and Trails Master Plan, that will go over here in a few minutes. And then also in a lot of the sections, you'll see actual, actual references to. Tables or diagrams similar to what we did in chapter seventeen one hundred a couple of weeks ago. So we're trying to incorporate those by reference into the, to the development code to take away some of the legal challenges from land use attorneys. The second one here is probably one of the biggest changes actually, and that's changing the ratio of. Parkland per person that is in the formula for how we acquire parkland and how much from point zero zero four three of an acre of parkland per person. To point zero zero six eight. So if you want an illustration of that, I can always jump to the whiteboard in a little bit, but basically. The gist of it is, we're going to be requiring more parkland is dedicated. Or that. It basically increases the fee and lieu in, in situations where we don't want parkland. So it's just, it's basically the multiplier in the equation is increasing. And again, this is consistent with the master plan, if you go into the master plan document. The point zero zero six eight is in that master plan, so we're relating the master plan to the code edits. We also did a lot of work, and a lot of this was actually Spencer with our attorney's office. Relating the fee and lieu as it relates to the size of dedicated land and making sure that that's clear and objective so that we can actually require that. Few other ones here, we removed the diagram in seventeen eighty-six twenty, and instead we're defining the amount of linear. Right away along the parkland and it's, it varies by parkland size. So one of the reasons to do this is because. There was a court decision, I believe around two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. That a developer by Bornset Park challenged the city. And the decision was in that court decision that whenever there's right away along the park that the city owns, that the city is on the hook for the. Hatched improvement, similar to a developer is along their land. And so that's one of the reasons to take this out is because if you require every park to have streets along all sides of it, it gets very expensive for the SDC budget. Another reason is if, you know, if you have small kids, you realize sometimes when you go to parks, you don't really want a situation where. You know, if it's a smaller park, you don't want streets around all four sides, like, so then you have like kind of no safe zone for your kids to be playing at. And you kind of want to let them just kind of run and play, you don't want to kind of have them right next to you all the time, at least that's how I am. And then, and then a kind of a third reason for it is that. This, this allows for more land to be preserved for basically parks and not for, to be dedicated as road. We also modified section seventeen eighty-six thirty to better define environmental testing requirements. There's been some pushback from this from developers in the past that have dedicated parkland, and so we wanted to make that more clear and objective. And have it defined a little bit better in the code. And then we added a level of service reference in another section to be consistent with the level of service that's being applied in the Parks and Trails Master Plan. And then one additional thing that just came up in the last few weeks is that currently. The code has a table. Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me here.
It's on page eight of the handout.
Thank you, it's on page eight. It's, it's not modified, yes, correct. So the table is currently written as you'll see in the code. As, for example, three total persons per unit is what we define as a single family dwelling. The SCS group is recommending that we modify some of these. So the single family dwelling would be reduced from three to two point seven three. That'd be the only one reduced, and then the multifamily would go from two to point or to two point zero two, which is really barely a change. And then manufactured dwelling units would go from two to two point two. And then they did not have a recommendation for duplex units or congregant multifamily. So what, what this would do, if we decided to go with their recommendation is the multiplier would modify, and so for a single family home. We'd be acquiring less parkland per unit. And if they, and if we decided we wanted the fee and lieu instead, the fee and lieu would be reduced, because the multiplier is reduced.
What was, I mean, this is all kind of new to me to hear this. Can you just kind of clarify, FCS is those the SDC people?
Correct.
And so why, what's the, what's the rationale for doing that?
They're saying that these numbers that they're proposing are closer to the numbers that the census reports that are average household sizes for these different sort of units. That's the explanation I was given. The, the one thing, the one thing I, just from like a, a planning perspective, would push back a little bit on that is. Manufactured dwelling units are pretty much one of your only affordable housing units that we kind of left, and I'd be a little bit skeptical to increase the multiplier on that. There's not really a lot of affordable housing options, and if we're increasing the multiplier on that and decreasing on single family homes that are selling for six hundred thousand plus. I just don't think that's a, probably a really good policy decision, but. This is the recommendation from FCS, I don't know if Spencer, would you like to go into this any further at this point?
I'll just, I'll just mention what I mentioned to you when we exchanged emails about it is that. It's, as Kelly said, it's, it's really a policy question and, and these numbers. Are that FCS is relying on, don't, don't come from city documents, but they, they come from census numbers. Whereas ostensibly the numbers that are currently existing come from studies that the city developed or hired outside consultant to develop. To track with its num, you know, its growth numbers over time, and there's, and there's no legal requirement. That the city's numbers need to match the census to, you know, at the expense of not matching. Their projected growth numbers that they've developed to comply with state land use requirements for growth projections.
Just to clarify, you're talking about this, this current sense of the census we just had, it's kind of was.
Yeah, the two thousand twenty-one.
A bit of.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I just kind of think about that while we're discussing, but if, if you did want to modify what's in your packet tonight, I would need input to bring it back. To you on June sixth with modifications to those numbers, otherwise if you don't want to, we can just keep them as is. And then jumping to the master plan, which is the second part of this, and it's a lot shorter. The city council in two thousand twenty-one adopted the new Parks and Trails Master Plan. However, there's been some modifications that were needed to happen in the master plan, which I'll go over in a minute here. It went back before the Parks and Trails Board in March, and then to the Planning Commission in April, and both the board and commission recommended approval. To the city council for the June adoption. And I'll just kind of go through these, and then if Rochelle or Marine want to add anything, please feel free to join in, because I am definitely not the expert on the master plan amendments by any means. So the, the three main things were that my takeaways from the three main changes to it, we're to align the plan closer with the TSP. As you know, the TSP has kind of been put on hold for now because we're waiting on a contract with ODOT. However, back when we adopted the Parks and Trails Master Plan, the TSP was about three or four months. Less along than it is now, and so we had some more data and some more reliable assumptions, so we updated the master plan. With those assumptions, we refreshed it with the two thousand twenty census data information. And we aligned the level of service needs. With the development code amendments, as I, as I spoke to, so I don't, Rochelle or Marine, if you want to add anything. No, okay.
So can I just ask a question? So did, did these three bullet statements. Result in any kind of like fewer trails, fewer parks. Fewer projects on the CIP list.
I, I believe. Yes, and, and the reason why I say I believe yes is because a few of the trails, for example, that we had assumed would be. At the expense of the park system in the future, we realized after talking to. You know, we had ESA and DKS talk to one another, and we realized that a few of those trail networks or a few of those items that were proposed in the Parks Master Plan. Were really more relatable to transportation improvements, and therefore should be paid by transportation SDCs or money in the future. So that the trails weren't necessarily removed, but where the funding is going to come from has been shifted.
Yeah, that's my question, and, and is there kind of like a, is there any red, what do you call that, redlining or whatever, I don't know if that's the right word? Is what, is there a mocked up, what it changes or track changes?
Oh, a track chain version of the.
Yeah.
I certainly don't have one, it would be ESA that I think would have produced that.
All right, I'd like to get a copy of that just to. So I don't have page by page what's changed.
Yeah, we do have, this is Maureen with the ESA. We provided a summary, a one-page summary that indicates the individual tables and pages that have changes, but I don't believe we have a track changed version.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Yeah, we, I think Rochelle, we could probably send that to the entirety of council before the June sixth adoption, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that concludes my presentation here. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Discussions, questions, Don?
Yeah, questions or comments, I guess. They're pretty specific, in seventeen eighty-six dot twenty. There was a phrase there, one really quick, sorry. That I didn't understand, twenty second C. And. It says. In all zones where property butts park, parkland offense no higher than six feet shall separate the use from the parkland. I'm not sure what the use is in reference to. It seems like it's missing something from a student structure perspective. You see this, Ken?
I just pulled it up here. I think we could add some additional clarity to that, and if you're, I guess, I guess my part in that is.
It just didn't read right.
No, but if, if you're in trouble reading it and I don't have an immediate answer. That's my answer to that.
Okay, fair enough.
Kind of a broader question is, how do we name, what is the official name of the Parks and Trails? System Master Plan or just Master Plan, because the document itself is not clear at all. Because it refers to itself as the Sandy Parks and Trail System Master Plan Update. So when we're referring to it in the, in the code as Parks and Trails Master Plan twenty twenty-two. I, I, I think we need to be rigorously consistent on how we name both the documents themselves and then how we reference the documents. But for council, not this council, the JD Council. The question I have is contractually, a lot of the times when I'm working with contracts, I will use the phrase, you know, when I'm referencing another document. The document name or subsequent revised documents as may be revised from time to time or. I will use the phrase, you know, when I'm referencing another document, the document name or subsequent revised documents as may be revised from time to time or something to that effect. If we were to, is, is there similar phrasing that can be used in code that would still fit the. That current objective and, and, and what was, was the word we're looking to.
Yeah, incorporating it.
Incorporation.
So if we have an amendment in 24, you know, the 2022 master plan as amended.
My, from time to time, or you know, yeah. So is there, is there room there to not create a document management nightmare by hard coding? All these referenced documents that should be living and evolve over time.
So I, I think the answer to that, and I'll turn it to Spencer, but I think the decision, I think the answer on that is no, but let me, let me turn it to Spencer.
Um, yeah, I'd, I would say. Unfortunately, well, the way that the case law has come down on land use appeals or needed housing applications, which is where clear, the clear and objective standard comes into play. The, the message that Luba is consistently given to local jurisdictions is if you want to. Apply a criterion, you either need to put it in the code itself, or you need to make an, a very explicit. Reference to an external document that's easily. That's easily identifiable in that secondary document. A lot of the remands from Luba on need is needed housing applications have been on the basis that. The incorporation has been too general in nature. And so what. What staff and outside consultants have done through this series of updates is actually kind of the opposite of what you're suggesting. And I'd be somewhat leery to just kind of append on to the end of these things as amended or, or something of that nature. Be specifically because of those decisions that have come from Luba. I, I think what's probably a more prudent approach. Until we have really clear guidance from the courts on this is to just kind of set a schedule up for review. Of needed housing provisions so that we know things aren't ossifying over time.
Can I, can I ask a variation? Cause you hinted at it there. Would it be acceptable in a, if in our code we had in, at an early section, a listing of. The keywords, how we refer to a document and then a mapping to the, the document name itself and version number, release date, et cetera. And then so, so that for instance, the 2022, we could just refer to. Parks and Trails Master Plan and then. Net dot 100 or the very beginning of the section, reference the document by name. So we don't have to update it in 14 different places.
I, yeah, from, from a draftsmanship perspective, I think that's a feasible thing to consider. I, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be done. I guess, you know, for me, the question, the question would be one to kind of send more to staff and me that if from a legal perspective, that answers, yeah, yes. So then their question just goes to staff is, is doing it that way easier? From an administrative standpoint.
Yeah, I, I would say that would be. Almost just as difficult because if you see, for example, in. 17. 8610. C1. Because we want to make sure that we're also referencing map 14, table 12, tier one, table A4, all of those items. Once the master plan is modified again, I would probably had to modify all those numbers again anyways.
So the take.
I mean, I like your point. I just, I don't know.
Managed, write a lot of contracts in my current work and it's a nightmare to keep them all.
So the takeaway is that if we, we amend our master plan, we should amend our code at the same time. Is that the takeaway?
Not just the code, but all over potentially the code. It could be in multiple sections, multiple chapters, multiple. And now you've got to be able to find it. If somebody typos one spot.
So I guess. I guess that brings me to a question in my own work there. Is there some type of application out there for cities to take their code and put in there and have like this dictionary that, you know. Artificial intelligence actually does pinpoint that in. So you can type it in, in nowhere.
Our contract management systems that would do that.
That do that for you so that we don't lose it from having just a kind of read through everything. And do we have that type of.
We do find and replace through Microsoft Word right now.
I, I, I use it all the time, but I do know like in some other types of applications that they do have, I can't imagine, you know, the city Portland.
I mean, I, I think it would be a good idea to research further, but I think for the purposes of the June 6th. You know, I think, I get, I get your point. I think it's a really valid one. I just don't know for there yet to do that.
Two more minor points, if we could. When we define parks, and I think it starts in. 178620G references, community parks, neighborhood parks. I think it also introduces it at the very beginning of the section. Sometimes it's capitalized neighborhood parks. Sometimes it's lowercase neighborhood parks. It seems like we're using it as a defined term in intro and then later using it as a defined term. So. For me, whenever I see caps outside of a beginning of a sentence, I'm looking for something formally defined.
And that was in 1786.
It shows up multiple times and makes different types of case, but I think it's, it's all in 1786, but remember, right?
Okay.
And the last one, I just want to make sure we're going to call it the 2022 master plan. And then the transportation system plan has no year. Is that deliberate or accident?
Where's that at?
In the, the TSP is referenced in 1786 dot 30 dot 8 dot 1.
No, it should be, it should have the year. Good catch.
Okay.
Any other comments, discussion? Lori, you have any?
Nope. Good.
Sorry. I just have one quick question and maybe this isn't the venue, maybe it's June 6th that I, I asked this question, but. The fee and lieu and the quarter acre, minimum quarter acre dedication based on populated size and everything. I know in Sandy, we don't get a lot of these big developments which allow us to build those parks, the larger parks that are on there. So I'm just kind of curious, what in this code allows us to maintain that control? We can still get the parts that we're looking for. But not kind of going down the route that we kind of did with like. Bailey Meadows and then the one we, we just heard not too long ago where that it wasn't going to line up right as future developments go. What, what control is in here? It allows us to develop the way we want to develop that our plan asked.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's like one of the whole cruxes of the whole. Adoption of this, I would say. So yeah, it's. 178610. C. That goes into. When the amount of land to be dedicated is, is less than one quarter of an acre or the level of service standards, you know, are not consistent with the master plan. We would take the fee and lieu with the following exceptions. And then one of them is for trails identified in the master plan. And the other one is to. Basically expand to other parkland. It's, I think it even says that necessitates additional acreage to meet the identified parkland acreage in the master plan. So I think, I think that's the kind of the section you're kind of getting at there.
Yes. When I read that, it's not really clear that we can. It's not really clear and objective that we, and maybe I'm wrong, just when I read it. It's not really clear on how. If it's specifically at those smaller park sizes that have come with these smaller developments, right? This is a big development. This isn't an issue so much. On making sure we get to place the parks to where we get the bigger parks. It's kind of our goal. But as they annex and develop these, you know, five, 10 acre little spots that are only going to give us these little quarter acre chunks of land that really. So we end up with a bunch of mini parks, but not really what our goal is. And I don't see how that really articulates it. Now, maybe I'm totally wrong. But it feels like it still gives the developer that wiggle room to kind of come back and say, that's not clear and objective. And it's more beneficial for me to use to pay the money. Which I don't know if that's necessarily in our best interest because again, we don't, while we get some money, we don't end up where we want to be. Development isn't paying for itself and development isn't going the way that we are trying to direct it to. I mean, am I, is that, is that a misconception there or?
I can speak to that a little bit just because I was kind of involved in the whole process, but. You know, when I was on the parks board, but you know, the challenge that we have here is that. First of all, it used to be, you know, what it's used to say is at the city's discretion. And the way it used to work is that when we had a park identified in the parks and trails master plan. Are we required land dedication? And if we didn't have a park identified there, we require the in lieu. And then what happens, like you said, is that when you get these smaller parcels, and for example, at the Deer Point area, you know, we had half a park and then this other parcel comes. And you know, and this is where Spencer's going to have to weigh in, but you know, can you. Require them to give you park land adjacent to the other half of park you're trying to make a whole park on. And, and, and so how can you clear and objectively require that it be contiguous to an existing, you know, park, parkland?
So if I, if I could take a moment, I'm going to draw some and then we'll explain it here. So I think an illustration is going to be really helpful. So if we have. Let's just say. And I know it never works out this easy, but let's just say we have four pieces of land. And the parks master plan just shows a park somewhere there. Let's just say. This clause, the, the last part of 178610 before it goes into A. Says the dedication or provision of parks, open space, trails and amenities shall comply with the master plan. Pursuant to the formula in section 178610 and in compliance with the improvement standards in 1786. The level of service standards as well as the parks and trail level of service needs as identified in, and then it gives a reference to a chapter table and verse basically. Are incorporated. So basically what that's getting at, and Spencer can elaborate on this more. But if this is a 48, 40 lot subdivision, say this is 60 lots of vision. Say another 60 lot and say this is a hundred lot. Based on the level of service needs, what this part is being shown at the 40, based on the code provisions for dedication will dedicate this much. The 60 would dedicate this much and the hundred would dedicate this much. And be, and that is because we can't require more than that because it wouldn't be. What do you call it? Spencer, I'm, I'm linking on the term.
There wouldn't be a nexus between the impact and the, the impact of the development and. And the burden on the infrastructure. So you kind of run into a taking's issue with Nolan.
We're okay with, I mean, it is a little bit disjointed as to try to manage that park. And I don't expect that to come up, you know, because I don't think we didn't necessarily did it like that. But the intent there is that we don't end up with, you know, four different mini parks on four each corner. That Spencer, that's kind of where I want to make sure, you know, if they say, well, here we're giving you the acreage, but you know, and nothing's contiguous. What's our mechanism to prevent that from happening?
Well, I. I, I would defer to Kelly in that regard. What I would say is that as the last resort is that the city would say. Well, we've got parkland already developed in this area and we're, and we're collecting fees in lieu of development for places. That are not building parkland. And if push comes to shove, we can exercise our power of eminent domain. Purchase the parkland and build out the park as we need to, to make the park, you know, whole quote unquote, based on Kelly's diagram.
And so this language fulfills that. I mean, that's, that was just my concern is.
We don't, yeah, that, that right, the city holds under state law already. So we don't need, need to enshrine that. In the code in order for that to be the city's kind of. You know, option of last resort. And in fact, I, it's not imminent domain is not popular generally. So I don't think it's a good idea. Probably to bake it into the code, but in discussions with them at a staff level, you know, pre-op meetings and things of that nature. It certainly can be discussed and, and staff can let it be known that. The master plan envisions one part, one large neighborhood park and not four pocket parks.
Or is that, can you require some sort of where there's an existing park and we're adding on that, that it be contiguous with the adjacent parcels?
Yeah, I think that, that's what that's requiring.
Right.
Cause it's saying that, so basically what it's saying is that the parks master plan. And sorry if I get the lingo wrong, but if it requires a neighborhood park and all that we have right now is enough land for a mini park. That if you're a land of butts that you're going to have to dedicate more acreage to get the, it closer to the level of service identified to the master plan. And that, that's why it references that chapter and table and everything. So that's, that's where the level of services identified.
Or being low is the choice of the city.
Correct. And, and counselor Walker is correct that it did say at the discretion of the city. That was actually taken out. Spencer had a great point on that one is that we didn't want to basically put or keep in a line. That basically said the city has discretion.
Want to imply somebody else has discretion everywhere else.
Well, because it says the city's discretion only. Yeah. Do you want to, did you want to go into that a little bit, Spencer?
Yeah, well, we're, I mean, so these updates were the, we're, you know, part of the exercise is to try to. Update this language so that it's defensible under a needed, uh, needed housing application legal challenge. And at the city's discretion, that language is kind of the. Poster child for non-clear and objective. You're just saying the city can choose at its, you know, at its preference, which. Which door A or B it wants to. Go through. And so that is what developers, attorneys are looking for. They're scouring codes when they, when they work with clients on these applications to say. We can just require that they not impose this code requirement by making an argument that it's not clear and objective and it's discretionary. And if we, and if we make that argument, the, the city's only alternative isn't to say, okay, well, we'll impose the other one. It's to waive the requirement in its entirety. That's what the needed housing statutes say have to be done when a, when a non-clear and objective standard is identified.
Questions? I'm going to come up with mine. I, and I just have a few, but I, I reserve the right to kind of study this more carefully. So on the 30, section 732. 173260. Section B, it says provisions for pedestrian and vehicular off street access shall be included in the individual park specific master plans. So my concern about how that's worded is that if you're, you know, have a application. There's not, you know, so it's like that access points that I was talking about before on the, on the long streets. Yeah. We want access on like if. If we don't have any streets on three sides of the park, for example, and they're just backyards and fence line, there's no access to the park except for on one side. But, but I think there's, I don't think that's the case because I think we've required some pedestrian access, but it implies like. We're supposed to do a specific, a park master plan before we decide where those access points are, which isn't, you know, it's kind of a chicken and egg. We're not going to have a park master plan until we have a park. So.
Yeah, I think in 1732, this is, this is referring to the improvements on the parkland.
Okay.
I think the, the improvements you'd be referring to on the developer side would be in 178620.
Okay, well. I'm going to, you know, just have you kind of make sure that's the case because then when you go to that 17. What was the. Okay, on section 17.86.20, section B on the sides of the parkland. Okay. And so let me just kind of set the stage a little bit here. You know, we used to have that diagram, all this parks, houses face the park. And then we decide we didn't like that. We're getting rid of it. But on the other hand, we don't want like a park surrounded by everybody's backyards. And you know, here's this one little alleyway to get to this park and nobody even knows there's a park in their backyard because, because. And so, you know, we want to make sure that you, you don't have to walk all the way around the block to get to a park. We want to be able to make sure there's access to the park. On all, you know, reasonable sides. If there's houses over there. Now, if it's a big wild area, you don't need to access, but where there's other development, we want to make sure those people can get into the park. And not feel like they're walking through people's front backyards, whatever to get in there. Okay. So, so now, so then there was this discussion that in this section about how much frontage. Should we have on the park where it's kind of open and looks like, you know, come on in, it's a park. And, and that's where, you know, depending, they kind of just, the parks board decided to kind of put it as to, you know, based on size of the park. Um, the linear feet would be, you know, that's where you get into E and one, two, and three, and all that stuff. Um, but then also you want to have on, you know, on section B on the sides of the park when not running onto a street, a pedestrian and bicycle access way shall be provided. I, I say, I can't tell if that's like inside the park or getting from the street to into the park. That's, that's kind of like this section and that section that I referenced before was kind of confusing to me. Like, you know, one has to be planned in a parks master plan, and the other one has to be done as part of their, uh, land dedication. So, and you don't have.
Well, we, we can just strike the one in seventeen thirty two, because that, so the one in seventeen thirty two is not really all that important. It's really seventeen eighty six, twenty, because that's the governing. We could strike the other one if you have concerns about it.
Yeah.
We could just strike the seventeen thirty two one.
And then building on the B, um, the, the confusion part is like, okay, if we have a, you know, eight hundred foot long park, um, you know, how many, what's a reasonable number of access points to the park that we should have if it's all along a neighbor, you know, it's all yards and stuff. And it's not really clear here. It's not, you know, it's not mentioned. I know you guys have, um, park lengths of four hundred feet or something like that. And.
Block length.
Block length. Yeah.
They just strike that B.
I don't want to.
No, I don't want to strike B. I'm going to strike B in seventeen thirty two.
That's what you said, seventeen thirty two B gets struck.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And on this one, though, I do want, you know, to kind of.
You're, you know. So you're basically on this one, if I, if I think, I think I know what you're talking about, uh, councillor Walker. So seventeen eighty six, twenty B. You're saying how many linear feet in between the different access ways?
Yeah, you know, we, it's like, is this just one on the sides? You know, is it on each side or just one side? And you know, if, if we do have a long, narrow park, is it, you know, one or, or, you know, based on block length or whatever? So just a little clarification would be really helpful in that.
No, I, I think that's a good point because we'd want to know. Yeah, if it's, if it's. Yes. So if, if we want every four hundred feet, which I think is the distance, because that'd be consistent with our block. Yes.
Yeah.
Every four hundred feet.
Um. Okay. And then kind of going to Rich's point, um, I'm going to go down to seventeen eighty six point three zero, section three and those phase developments. And the concern I have about this is that. You know? If developers know that they can get away with paying fee in lieu of getting down to the, you know, point two, five acres or less by, you know, and of course, and I'm a little bit paranoid about all this, but just, I'm, we've, we've been, we've been through this. So I, I'm always anticipating like, what are they going to do with this? And if they can get, you know, if they can kind of do something to kind of make it so they don't have to give us perks, what are they going to do? And so my concern is, is are they going to be breaking up their park, their phases of their development into these small sections? And like you said, we're not going to necessarily be able to kind of get a whole park out of it. We're going to have these phase developments. And so you've kind of, you stretch out the face developments, but you did say that, you know, in a phase development that I guess I'm confused about where, whether do they really come in with the phase development or did they just say, we just want to do this? And then, you know, six months later, we just want to do this and we just want to.
No. So the, the code in the annex or in the chapter seventeen, one hundred. Sorry. So in seventeen, one hundred, the subdivision criteria that you just adopted two weeks ago gives a lot more specification for what it means to be a phase development and that has to be shown on the plat. So it would have to be phase one would be recorded separately as its own plat and then phase two. Does that give, does that give clarity?
Do, do be for the whole all phases? Is that what this is?
Um, phase development, their car parking for their. Yes. So in a phase development, say they have. Um, the views is actually a really good example of this. So they have eighty nine lots. The first phase is forty lots, so they can record two separate plats. The second phase is forty nine lots. But this is saying that the total of both phases, you would have to dedicate the parkland on the final plat for the first phase. And that's to, to assure that we get the dedication and to assure that they don't try to play this, this shell game with us during phase two.
But then my suspicion is that they would then decide not to do these ba, this base thing, and they'll just kind of do it more piecemeal. So what's to stop them from?
They can't record the plat unless I sign it. And if they're trying to do this like piecemeal thing around the, the conditions in the land use, we did, we wouldn't record the plat. They'd have to record the entire subdivision.
I mean, if they decide to say, we're going to develop this parcel here. And then, and then nine months later, they come in and we want to develop this parcel here. Saying.
Oh, that'd be it. So two separate land use applications. I, I don't think there's anywhere around that.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, there'd be two separate subdivisions.
Yeah. I mean, there's the, the idea is something, some of these applications, I mean, so that's why also we're addressing the fees in lieu requirements and, um, you, you know, you're, you're trying to incentivize it by making the fee and lose so that either way, the city satisfied with how they handle it. And then also, you know, it's just a practical matter. Um, they would be essentially doubling their administrative costs for getting a development, uh, vested once and then having to come back later and go through all the same, uh, effort to get the second development vested when they could kill two birds with one stone and do that as a single phase development.
I mean, I, I. I think it's fair to be suspicious about it because at this point, why wouldn't we be?
I think beyond suspicious, I, I mean, I agree with you councillor. It, it may be. And so the question is, you just want to make sure that you're comfortable. Assume that a scenario is going to come up where that happens and just make sure that what you're looking at, you're comfortable with.
Well, I mean, and you know, when you say, well, we have a fee in lieu of, well, the problem with that is that, you know, that doesn't get you a park in that neighborhood. And so. Right. But that takes process and we don't, you know, like to use it and stuff. So, yeah.
So you bring everybody to the table with the stick.
Right. Yeah. I, I get that. That, you know, that's a good way to do it. Okay. Well, that's all the questions I had for now. I'll kind of take a look. I, I think. Well, first of all, I want to say I did, I, I was really, uh, thrilled with all the changes that got made because, and mostly the changes with the master plan just had to do with the fact that the fact that we, when we had those calculations for the units per acre, we hadn't accounted for the trail acreage that we wanted. So that was the question that came about is how do we make sure we get the trail alignments that we want out of this? Cause that's, you know, in some ways, you know, going to be much more common and frequent because we've got more trails than we have parks. And we want that connect connectivity between the things. I really want to, uh, thank, uh, Kelly and Michelle and the parks, uh, board for, for really kind of helping address all those issues. I am, you know, the, the, the units, the people per unit type thing. I, you know, from where I sit, I feel like we should just leave it the way it is. I'm not, you know, I don't really, this current census we had is a little bit. Um, you know, I don't think it was our best effort with the, with the whole COVID situation and all. So I'd be more comfortable just leaving it the way, way it is, um, with the unit, with the people per unit as it was, or you know, whatever.
And I mean, just so you know, that's my take as well. And that's why I didn't propose the modification in what you're seeing tonight.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Appreciate that.
Any more discussion? Any more recommendations?
I have a few things to change and I'll run them by the city attorney after I modify them and we'll bring it back in, uh, June for you to hopefully adopt.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, report from the city manager.
Council president, um, want to start off with, uh, our announcement about the longest day parkway. Um, that is returning after a couple of years. Um, I think I maybe sent this out an email, but wanted to get this out here, June twenty third. So I think that's quite the longest day, but one of the longest days. Um, but, uh, that evening, um, similar event that we've done in the past was shutting down roads and allowing vice, you know, bicycles and walking, um, but it'll be in the Cascadia neighborhood over there by Cascadia Park on, uh, June twenty third that evening. So Michelle and staff are working on, uh, getting everybody organized and all the department heads are working on lining up their, uh, you know, little featurettes and, and things like that. So.
Kid swag.
Swag. Yeah. Yeah. Ice cream. Good stuff.
But you're grilling acres, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so announcing this also as an invitation to council to participate as well, um, to will help a spot for you, um, with the, the admin team too.
Well, the past we have been serving the food. Is that what you're considering?
Yeah.
That was really pretty good.
Get your process.
Get into grilling.
Chance to be able to talk to people that way.
Yeah. Hopefully by then we'll have some decent weather. Um. Yeah, I know. Sorry. Um, wanted to acknowledge Jeff and his work in, um, getting the Sandy at work hashtag, um, sort of feature out. Um, I've enjoyed looking at those. Hopefully you have too, um, on social media, but, um, also just recognizing some of the, it's, it's one way we can recognize all this, uh, the hard work and unique work that our, our staff do. Um, couple of them have highlighted the public works team out there in the middle of the night doing water main fixes or, um, I think it was either the last council meeting or, uh, after the um, listening session on homeless driving down, you know, highway twenty six. There's a sandy net team, you know, late at night doing some fiber pulling and, and moving fiber on twenty six. So, you know, they're out there, um, you know, late at night or early in the morning on the sewer project, for example, with the contract the council approved tonight. Um, with the C M D C, our, our own crews have been out there, um, inspecting and cleaning, um, all those pipes to get ready for the repairs. And so, um, yeah, they're putting a lot of time and effort and just want to acknowledge, um, those guys. Um, you've seen the, the announcements about, uh, the staff, um, at the community center, um, really ramping up and Michelle building her team. Um, so we're, you know, happy to have the community center open to our regular hours after two years. Um, finally getting staffed up to do that. And the next step will, will be getting the kitchen up and working again for congregate meals and that, uh, and that, those things. So, um, you know, she's done a great job, uh, getting some great staff on board. And, um, even with our positions that we're recruiting for right now, we're seeing a lot more applicants and positive movement and employment, um, getting back. Uh, and then finally, um, uh, chief and I were talking today and I just want to give an update on the body cameras. Um, they have arrived. Uh, we have them here. Um, so a couple of months away still from being deployed, um, a lot of the software and, and getting, um, you know, everything set up with evidence and, and the records management, uh, and then also, uh, training. Um, and then we'll start with the pilot program with a couple of officers, um, and kind of work out the kinks and see how it's, uh, working before deploying it department wide, but um, probably a couple of months, we'll, we'll have those out on the road. Um, so pretty exciting moving on that.
Hey, um, oh, you haven't, it's time. It's first one. Uh, second thing had the, somebody approached me a few times and, and hit me up again this weekend about what, what is the city's status of emergency preparedness for a major event? We're coming into the typical event season again with fires and, and, uh, things like that. So and I, it occurred to me, I don't understand or know what our emergency response plan is. I'm sure there's one. But I'd love to get briefed on it at some point in the, in the future.
Crazy how you say we're coming up to that. When I started in council, it was in November, we were coming up to the emergency, but it was the snow and then. Yeah, now it's a, it's a we thought the summer was that, but that's where we are today.
So my, my turn. Uh, a question about, um, if or what the ODOT was doing in terms of traffic, pedestrian type of traffic on twenty six. Now there's so much work being done on the new, uh, hopefully soon to be installed sidewalk. Uh, the reason why I ask is I was waiting to pull out from Langin Sand into, I mean, twenty six to my disadvantage. I probably shouldn't have done that. And they had the road blocked on the far side where they were doing the work. And I was watching uh, a couple of folks coming down from the Vista Loop, uh, direction headed towards up to seven eleven or something like that. And there was a lot of back and forth on some of the, the barricades and such. And, uh, it looked awkward. I just wondered if they, I'm sure that it have a plan in process, but it seemed that it wasn't very well implemented. Well, we could take a look at that and kind of see how that one works. I don't want to put people into more uh, risk in the process to try to make their traffic from one spot to the other better. So was really seem to be difficult because you had people moving out into the highway on the one lane only backed up a lot from the folks coming from the sand, from sort of corner direction headed into town. It was just kind of a big congestion. Take a look at that. Were we going to have a yard and debris, that kind of thing set up? And do we know a date on that? Uh, what's the status on?
We are.
See about junk through that out the city.
Yeah, I think Tyler has a meeting this week to try to figure out a, a date. We're trying to avoid the longest day parkway, mountain festival, but give enough time to notice. And, um, so I, sometime probably in June is when I'm.
I'm seeing a lot of junk on the yards and backyard yards, trees coming down, branches coming down, that kind of stuff. Great. Ampamun, that's it.
I noticed that on the, um, uh, about the pleasant street master plan getting worked on. And about on the docket again, and that was something that I really didn't have much involvement in or awareness about it. What is all it calls for? I do know there's, you know, there was some concern from some of the local businesses and, uh, about it. And so I just think it would be helpful to have a session about it with the council before, you know, I, I don't really want to see it kind of brought to us with a bow on it when, you know, because this is a different council and now, you know, I mean, if there's some changes that need, you know, some slight tweaks or whatever, let's have that. Give that direction now before they bring it with a bow and all that. So that would just be something I'd suggest. Um, the, um, all ditto with the transit, you know, I guess they're talking about building new buildings at the, um, public works, uh, operation center there, transit operations thing. And again, I, I'm kind of confused about what those plans are. I guess we were going after a grant or got a grant or something to build more stuff there. And I'm just expressed concern that I want to make sure, you know, we, I think Jenny's talking, you know, looking into in the future, if we have to bring some of that water maintenance or, you know, water or wastewater maintenance stuff in-house, you know, we need a place for those people to, to, you know, park or whatever, or, um, I know, you know, Sandy Net is in a building that doesn't even have any hot water right now. So I feel like we should be planning to make sure that we've got at that, you know, at that center the capacity to address the space needs for Sandy Net and for Public Works. And in addition to the transit, and I just feel like if transit's kind of just moving along without, you know, then, then the other two folks kind of get whatever's left over, if anything. So I just want to make sure that facilities planning is taking place to kind of address the facility space needs for these other departments. Cause I think, you know, these, the transit stuff, it's like for the county and not everybody else. And that's I guess less important to me than, than our own city needs. And, um, I was thrilled to see, you know, the police, uh, um, ceremony there. Really excited about that. I did read a good article about how some police departments are really trying to increase the diversity of their candidates. Again, they're you know, very still well qualified candidates, but just the positive, um, results that they find when they increase the diversity, um, of candidates in their police force or, um, it kind of benefits a lot of different aspects of community policing. And it was a great article. I, I, I might forward it to Jordan and and, uh, and you can port it on if you want. So other than that, um, yeah, what I do, I'm curious about the cleanup, uh, May thing with the hoodling. Uh, trash folks to see if they're doing that. That's kind of been, folks have been asking me about that. I don't know what the date is. So if we have a date, let's get that out on the Facebook or something. Thanks for everybody's great staff reports today. Appreciate it.
Rich.
Yeah, real quick. Uh, so there's a, I find myself driving down to Barco. I'm going to go to Fred Meyer's a lot, feed my kids. But with all seriousness, uh, there's this crossing of the Titten Creek Trail just past Melissa Road. Um, I've noted that as the weather's getting better, multiple times I've seen people come up and nobody is failing to yield the pedestrians at that crosswalk. And there's a lot of kids that ride bikes and stuff. And I noticed down at the, at the park down there, there's some. And I noticed down at the, at the park down there, there's some signage that at least warns people because it's just one of the, the, it's not a marked crosswalk. It's marked, but it's not like your typical marked crosswalk. So either some signage or, or some kind of a, a little more notice that that's a crosswalk. So I, I just hate to see a kid get there because it's not readily identified as the crosswalk we're typically used to.
Is that the one to the east or to the west of Melissa?
Uh, would be to the west.
Where it kind of connects us down into small.
Yeah.
You, you, you've said there, there's nobody failing to yield, but you, you mean the opposite, right?
I'm sorry. Yes. People are failing to yield. Yeah, nobody's stopping.
I know what you're talking about.
It's also a little bit hard to see when you're coming, if you're going east. A little bit harder to see because there's a lot of growth.
They're sagging really low.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a problem. Uh, people who are local know obviously that.
Yeah, I just think, or I mean, I don't, I don't even know if it's necessarily an enforcement issue. I just think that some signage to recognize that, that, that lightly different colored brick on the ground is actually a crosswalk.
Narrow too.
Yeah.
So not only is it, you're going fast, but it also narrows you right into the.
It's kind of on a corner there as you come around the corner.
That's why they narrowed it the other way. To slow it down, but I don't think it had traffic. I think it just.
So some signage or some lane marking or, or just something so that people know that's a crosswalk, I think would be a step in the right direction.
All right, Lori.
No report. Thanks, Tom.
All right. I just have one thing. Um, I was coming up, uh, here at tonight in twenty-six and hanging a left. I look over and I see the sign behind the building. I had to turn around, look and see what the sign was. So we were sitting there, realize, I mean, this should be like on, I don't know, the memes of Facebook or whatever. It's an airport sign. It sits behind now the brand new building that was built. So you literally can't see it coming down the highway. I mean, Kelly knows exactly. I can tell, but it, it's just like, wow, okay. How do we, how do we, who's responsible, I guess, and that, because it just kind of makes us as a city look silly. Uh, just remove it would be better or.
It's the, it's the green on the outside.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's the light, uh, pole like and off the side of it is behind the building is now you're. Was that? It's ODOT, uh, but that just, uh, I just sit there and scratch my head when we went through that whole process. How in the world did that building get so close to that corner? Uh, I mean, it, is it encroaching on the right of ways? Because it's a.
The right of ways not wide enough, basically.
Okay. Well, we'll just leave it at that. The building's built, but, um, just something that I, I thought was humorous, but should get fixed or taken down. But, uh, that's all I have. The sign, not the building, not the building, the sign. Fix the sign. Anyways, uh, that being said, uh, we'll close this meeting at nine fifteen.